And number of other people, some people are not here, but great round, rounded committee to speak on various areas that they have expertise in or just knowledge in. The next item is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the agenda unless there is anyone else that has some corrections they'd like to make.
Probably move in a second. Is there anyone that want to make any changes to the agenda? Here and then we approve that by consensus. Approval of the minutes from our last public session.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes with any necessary corrections.
Is this part?
Yes.
Probably move and support it. And again, if anyone has any corrections from the minutes, it's always something that we can do at the next meeting. All those favorable motions, approval of the minutes, and if I say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Okay, unfinished business, we don't have any under new business. Before we get this, it's a small things that we have accomplished and then we have a presentation that was given to City Council. But number six is the main reason why we want to be here, for your participation, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. Potential policy recommendations, just a comment that we are very close to having a finished product. We have gone through a number of different areas, had harm studies completed by a number of different institutions, and have taken other information from individuals that have been working in various areas. And we have hired a writer that we recorded last time. So she is busy reading through the material and we have until June 30th to have it completed. We hope to have it completed before that so we have a chance to review it and then to move it on to City Council. We still are meeting every Tuesday for two, at least two hours to go over various items that we need to finalize and we're making great progress in doing that. We did make a presentation to City Council that I think Evan is going to do the presentation now.
Thank you, to the chair.
And Janet Hazel has arrived to the meeting.
To the chair, thank you everybody for joining. As Member Parker said, we did present this at City Council and also at our last public session that we have virtually in February. So we just have a few more updates since then that we want to share. One of them being this one, a reparations eligibility survey. So as a member Parker said, we've been working a lot on the report and finalizing it. Eligibility is another big part of it. So if you all would scan this QR code, you could take the survey. We have about close to 200 so far. We have almost 1,000 on our original survey with the 30 policy recommendations. So we definitely want to get as much feedback on this and feel free to share it with as many people as well. You go to the next slide. So quick recap on the reparations task force was put on the ballot in 2021, seated in 2023, and fully staffed and seated in 2024. So we have 13 members. In 2021, it was passed with overwhelming support, over 80% of the voting population. Currently now, our office is at 4605 Cass Avenue. We're there from 12 to 5 every Tuesday and Thursday. So feel free to come to our office during our office hours. We have our weekly meetings every Tuesday at 5:30 PM. Been working on finalizing the report and also working with the report writer and the project manager, obviously, to oversee operational and administrative support. Some of our partnerships and university research that we did included Columbia University, whose report we shared, the harms report from the University of Michigan. We also worked with Wayne State, Ohio University, and groups like the Reparation Education Project, the Black Bottom Archives, we've had at a meeting, the National Symposium for State and Local Reparations, and lawyers, bankers, community land trusts. And we've been getting a lot of great research going into our report. Once again, our new survey is the eligibility survey, which we're trying to build up, and our community survey, which we featured on the news, we also had at our public sessions. We've had monthly public sessions for about the past year now. And the feedback that we got from the public sessions is what we use to put the 30 policy proposals together, also the four questions that are in the eligibility survey. Building a report team. So I believe in February, we talked about onboarding the writer. So at this point, the writer has been onboarded, the writer has been given the outline and we're working with the reporter now to finish the report. And we're going to talk a little bit about that during the breakout sessions today as well. Data gathering, ensuring completeness. So again, the roundtable discussions that we had, that's the purpose of this meeting. As Member LaSosa said as well, to get feedback from the community. And also working with the city departments is something that we've been working on since October, like the Legislative Policy Division, to help us with the implementation and the administration of our policy objectives once the report is given to City Council in June. Framing the report, the outline and the topic. So the outline is going to cover history, eligibility, recommendations, and areas for redress. And some of the sources that we have included here as well, Black Reparation Project, Dawn of Detroit, White Bonus, and again, the National Symposium for State and Local Reparations, which is the largest reparations organization in the nation that we attended last December. Extending the reach, so at our last public session, we mentioned that we would be asking for an extension. We did present to City Council our annual report on February 25th and we asked for that three month extension. We also gave the report and answered questions from City Council. At the next formal session, they did grant us the extension. So we are now set to present our final report and our presentation to City Council at the end of June. Just real quick on our budget, as of April 7th, so about a couple of days ago, our remaining balance is about $213,000. We've used about $203,000. So roughly over half of our budget is still here that we were allocated, allocated $350,000 initially and then another $66,000 for fiscal year 25. So just to recap, actively working with the report writer to finalize the report, incorporating community input, expert analysis, as we intend to do today. And upon completion, the report will be publicly released and we'll have a public session like this to share the findings before it's officially given to City Council. And that concludes it. Just want to give our contact info. Once again, we're at 4605 Cass Avenue. You could call us at 313-439-5645. Email us at reparations@detroitmi.gov, reparations@detroitmi.gov. And our website is detroitmi.gov/reparations. So there are many ways to get in contact with us and we look forward to hearing input from everybody. So with that, I'll send it back to the chair. Thank you, Member Parker.
Thank you, Evan. And you see that quite a bit that we have done and still a lot that we have to move forward. But let me, let me explain the main purpose of this meeting and if anyone has come before, we have done this a couple of times, where we really want input from you on what you think that we should be recommending to City Council. We have gone through quite a bit in the last time, there's quite a bit of suggestions. We have gone through each of those and some of them are incorporated in what we're going to do. So how we're going to do it is we're going to break into tables again. We'll have a document that we want you to follow to some degree, it's very general, so you'll be able to do it, but just within those categories to be able to make recommendations of what you think we should be putting in our report to City Council. So what we would do is take about 40 minutes or so to discuss at the table. I would only ask you not to get hung up on one thing and you talk about that for 20 minutes or more and then you can't get to the other areas that we want recommendations. That doesn't mean that we want to cut you off, but hopefully you can not do the speeches and just the facts, whatever you want to see in it, in doing that. Each of us will be at a table to help give you any guidance that you might want, but we, we only want to answer questions, not judge anything that you're recommending. Anything that you recommend will go down on the report. We also ask you to identify one person at the table that will make the report back to the general body at the end. We have 10, 15 minutes where we will come and you'll be able to report what areas you want us to concentrate on, or at least to put into our report. So please identify somebody at the table that can take notes and come and make a brief presentation about what the table decided. Any questions on that structure, how we're going to proceed? Okay, Evan, if you could pass out, if you're not at a table, you think there's too many people at that table, feel free to move around. I see a couple of tables over there that do not have as many people, only has one, I'm sure. All right, you're gonna have a hell of a report, but you can move around anywhere you want.
Does this happen out there? How long is this?
Yeah, well, that was terrible also, but it was great. It was cold.
Evan, did you pass him out?
To my water, water, water. Hydrotherapy, yeah, as well as we go into the ocean.
That was good.
Yeah, I, I love my daughter, so I'm just like observing.
Got you, okay.
So yeah, we'll just spend three minutes on each one.
No, you can hold on to that because we got, we got two of them already. You're good.
Evan, you clean.
Uh huh, thank you. It's 40 minutes, so you guys.
Yeah, just on, we got a bunch of extra papers they could write on.
Okay, can we try to keep our voices down a little bit because there's a lot of people talking all at once? Thank you.
Testing. Okay, as you get settled at your table, we need to be conscious as was just mentioned that if you talk too loud, then other people would not be able to hear was at their table. So appreciate you can use your indoor voice and try to make whatever points you want. If you have any questions about the categories and you're not clear what they mean, the member that's at your table should be able to share with you what that concepts are. I think there is pretty clear, but I guess it doesn't matter. I would say hotel, but I don't know anybody. Okay. All right, let's proceed on. You can start to talk, we got 40 minutes. I'll let you know when it's about 30 minutes. So we got 10 remaining.
Who is it?
They can't participate in this, so we're going to have their opinion.
If y'all don't mind, this is for the people online so they could join in the conversation. So you know, talking to the microphone.
Is to have a report.
If you don't mind, just so they can follow along with the conversation.
Okay, I can just sit here?
What, you're passing it around like you did last night?
All right, well, the, the idea is after the, after the 40 minutes, yeah, after the 40 minutes is up. Yeah, we're just going to, one of us, and we're, we're hoping that it's not a person from the task force who makes that kind of summary to the general body. And the reason obviously why we're doing that is that everybody, there's no reason for people to start at number one or start at number six. So people are probably going to select whatever it is that they're most interested in. And when you put them all together, ideally, we get, we get the, a fair representation of the entire room. Okay, all right, so anybody want to be the person who will make our?
You want to do it?
Okay, you selected, brother. Can we bother you for another one? I think we need one, he needs one. Yeah, so. Oh, sure, sure. And, and mind you, at any point, just like you have done in the past, if anybody wants to send something in, even if it didn't come from this table with your thoughts after discussion or whatever the case may be, feel free to do that. What we, what we're doing, we're taking all those in, we're tracking them, and we're trying to incorporate them into our broader discussion. And so even when we get to our Tuesday meetings, for example, if there was some that came in that period of time, we normally have a report on our agenda primarily headed by Evan, who says what, what correspondence or information came in and we kind of like discuss it. So things, you know, some things fall through the crack, but we try not to. Okay. Yep, yep. Okay, so did everybody get a chance to look at the, we're using this here right now. There's six elements on it, okay? And of those six elements, anybody want to kind of work through any of them or see anyone that, that they are?
Or, or any other questions that anybody had?
Because we're getting new people throughout. We tried to do the kind of quick summary, but we get people throughout. Okay, so any question? But this is the focus for this one, okay? Okay, okay, okay. Well, then, then, then how about, did you have one that you wanted to look at?
It was interesting to me the last time I came to the, I'm going to say, they were discussing who would get the cash restitution. Has that been defined so far? And will be eligible for that?
No, in fact, one of the, one of the surveys that Evan pointed out today, and that was the QR code that he had up, is a survey specifically on the question of eligibility. And eligibility is how that would be defined, okay? Right, you know?
I see you, this, you just asked, this cash payment, is that what this answers about how much compensation?
Okay, so what we're doing in the moment right now is we are currently discussing these six different items. And based on these items, we're going to, just, we're going to write down the first things that come to mind after we've read these sentences. And then we have members of the board at each of these tables and then, oh, okay, so we're talking to Zoom, okay. So that's exactly what we're doing in the moment is we are going over these six questions. And at each table, we're just asking each other, you know, what's the first thing that comes to mind? And then we're going to make some more concrete recommendations as a result of that. And then after some time discussing it, we'll have people present to the entire group. My name is Whitney Clark.
So we, we were looking at the sheet and trying to figure out what leaps out at us. What we got so far was looking at number six, Aaron talked about, no, it was William that talked about a mechanism that continues to manage the work after the reparations recommendations come in. And then Aaron threw out the idea of group economics and put, you know, thinking about putting a dollar into one big pot and growing it over time. What else leaps out at y'all when you look at this sheet? Haven't heard yet from you, brother.
Yes, yeah, I'm Tremell. I said, stated that number six, was one of the first ones that stood out to me and, and I agree with the brother Aaron about the socioeconomic disparities, I believe those are the term you use there.
to African Americans as a collective through city grants for initiative, innovative rather, programs designed by citizens to advance community sustainability. So whenever I see this one, that's number five. Whenever I see that one, that, that sounds like to me, setting aside money to help people expand the work that already exists. And that's, and that's what I was, that's what, you know, me and, that's what we were talking about, Ms. Edith, is like, how can we make sure that the work that you guys are already doing, you have the money to, to, the money set aside? And I think this is a great avenue to do it because this gives us the excuse we need to keep the money clean. Because oftentimes what happens, if you get a grant or something like that, it has to go through so many different hands. So $50 million turns into 12 million and by the time it gets to the neighborhood. So I think this might be a better way to, you know, make it more public and keep it, keep that money clean, so to speak, so.
I agree with what you're saying because it goes, oh, this is Aaron speaking. I like what you just said because the corrective social policies and legislative initiatives, how are they going to be implemented to correct those issues when the monies are there? We need to have some, we have to have some boundaries. We have to have individuals who are willing though legislatively to do something. And I don't feel I'm represented as well as I can by the state government.
Yeah, this is Tremell and, and I was looking at number one where it says cash restitution because what stood out for me with that is through policies, huh? Yeah, number one, through, through, through policies like redlining or convict leasing or COINTELPRO, usually when those policies that are, that are ending up attacking our community, there's economic cost of that and, and that plays into the lack of wealth. If you get, if your uncle got COINTELPRO, he can't work that job if he, usually COINTELPRO means you got locked up, you know, or if you're redlining, usually some sort of, the harm to that usually is, is affects your, your wealth and your cash. So I could understand number one also.
And see, and to add on to that, this is Whitney, Whitney Clark again. That, you know, and, and like you were saying, Mr. Davis, that seems like an unlikely one. And the only way that I would, you know, think that that would be a viable pathway forward is if we have strong number two. Because we got to be able, we need compensation to African Americans as a collective through a restoration of previously terminated community services and institutions. And I'm capitalizing, I'm underlining institutions because they broken down our schools in a way that keeps us dumb. And so the fear that, that, that I have when I hear cash reparations is, well, all we're going to do is go and spend it on something dumb, right? And so if we have education to go along with it, because for example, if you give the average person my age, you know, let's just say 5,000 extra bucks, I mean, I think it's naive to think that all $5,000 are going to go to something that betters the community. You know, I'm, I'm going to pass by the liquor store, you know what I'm saying? I'm going to go in. Well, yeah, I understand, but I'm saying just in theory, and I'm, and I'm not necessarily, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is necessarily my perspective, but I know that this is an argument that people will make. You know, like when we, yeah, when we give them money, then, then, then what are they going to do with it? You know, how can we ensure that they're going to do something that impacts them in a positive way? Right, which opens another debate, which is, Edith Ford.
One thing my grandmother always told me, when it's your money, you can stick it up a rest behind and let them run up the alley, that's on you. The consequences after that, if you don't do what you should, that's on you too. So we, we, I don't want us to continue with that narrative that black people don't know what to do for their money. For example, in Evanston, Illinois, they gave 25, like older people there, $25,000 apiece cash. Most of them got their homes fixed, three of them helped their grandkids or adult children open businesses. So we don't necessarily like mess up our money. And, and with the cash, no, this is the thing about reparations, we not going to win it just with litigation and writing this report. It has to be a massive industry movement that's bigger than the civil rights movement. You know, we got to get out of this me, me, me and work in the collective because as black people, there's no, that's our culture. This is where we come from. When we start adopting white supremacy and being individuals, our neighborhoods and our communities start failing and we have to stop that.
My name is Ken Scott. I've attended a number of these meetings and I'm looking at one through six. And I don't see anything specifically that has been identified as to what we're going to address to me. And keep in mind that I've been the head of a number of organizations. I want specifics. I don't know if you all know about the acronym SMART? Make it specific, make it measurable, attainable, actionable, achievable, however you want to say it, rewarding and timely. And I don't see anything, these things that address that. From the last time that I appeared here, which was months ago, I want to see specifics. I wanna see, I wanna, okay. But at the same time, we're still talking about generalities. We're not talking about what the harms were, what the losses were, what the discrimination was, abuses, uh, injuries. And we're not talking about how to remedy any of those. And I'm more for specifics. I don't talk about generalities. I wanna know what we're gonna do once the money comes in, once it's been allocated, once it's been dispersed. Okay? Okay, but at the same time, each time that you address this, it should be in there as a platform to do so.
This, this is live, can I talk, can I speak to it?
So if you wanna get some priority... Have your attention, half of the time has already gone by, twenty minutes. If you are going through each one, you should be at number three by now.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, we gotta speed up a little bit, but we was talking about cash compensation, who should qualify. My brother said that he believes for sure it should be descendants of persons enslaved qualifying for the program. And, and that, from a priority standpoint, I a hundred percent agree. And then we also talked about what about people who live outside of Detroit, who lived here, who was harmed and then displaced? Where do they fit into the equation?
Well, I guess my, my thought is, first of all, how would you prove? I don't know, I've been...
Go ahead.
How do you? How, how do you prove it? How, if you're going back to descendants of slaves, you know, how, how do you ever prove it? You know, it's a whole process, and like the brother said, you know, a costly process, you know, at that. And even if the city is paying for this, is this coming from city conference? Where's the money coming from? I guess that's my question. Okay, where's the money coming from? I, I, I did budget for the city of Detroit, one of the agencies. Where's the money coming from? And if it's coming from this, what must we give up in order to, to get that? And see, we never talk about both sides of the equation, we just talk about, oh, yeah, let's pay, 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 but what are we gonna cut, cut, cut in order to do it?
All right, I had made a proposal. Now, oh, oh, no. All right. I, I don't know if this mic works, but... Oh, okay, all right. But I had made a proposal, and it will be on one of your meeting agendas, uh, that would talk about a bond proposal where we would be able to do an, uh, arena, and, uh, esports arena, and water park at the Renaissance Center. Let that generate the money to pay reparations. Now, to who? I'm saying just in case, you always put, I, I'm a lawyer, you put backup in there, just in case, you don't wanna just say descendants of slavery. You want to also say victims of genocide of African descent. Cause now you got plenty of victims of genocide, and especially Palestinian. But that's where you have to specify which group of genocide. But, but yet, it isn't, it isn't just priority, it's precedent. And the precedent that was set, there's two. We can't just follow the American model. The international model was based on the anti-genocide treaty, which America is a signer of. And now forcing them to obey the treaty that they sign and go around the world and force another people to obey. That's what you can use against them, but you have to show that they're doing that to blacks because they could easily say they do that to everybody, and that would be true.
Just a question, just a question here, just so we can... In the task force, there've been a series of debates. One of them has been to fashion, uh, yeah, somebody else.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, one of, one of the, one of the debates that is taking place is that should we fashion a, um, a set of remedies that's reflective of the harm itself? No attention paid to costs? Or should we fashion a cost and then try and put remedies within side of that, okay? And it's a question of which way do you go? Okay, 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 okay.
Here, we're talking about making new laws, right, or recommending new laws to deal with, um, whatever issues we have in the community that we want to correct.
And it looks like these are the, these grants, we're on number four, was it four or five? Uh, my bad, sorry. Compensation, compensation for, to African Americans implement, through implementation of corrective social policies and legislative initiatives. I misread, but that would be creating new laws that... A law and ordinance rule that corrects, uh, the laws and rules that allow the harms to occur.
My one, um, is the scanning of our license plates. Nobody gets scanned but Detroiters. It's on their, their, uh, police vehicles. So they scan your plate to see if you have car insurance. Lack of car insurance is now a crime, a misdemeanor. So you're basically being criminalized because you're poor and can't afford to pay. So no other city in the state of Michigan, probably in the whole entire United States, gets their plate scanned. If you don't commit a traffic offense, they shouldn't be allowed to hunt you down and, and write you a ticket and on top of that tow your car. So that needs to be immediately removed because it's targeting black, poor blacks. I'm riding down the street, I'm trying to explain to you how it works. Okay.
Scanning device, or, cause they, usually when the police stop you, they have viewed your license plate before they even approached the car. So I'm asking, do you mean in some type of electronic scanning device?
They're on the top of the police cars, on their dashboards. It happened to me. Luckily, the police officer that scanned my plate, cause I did not pay my insurance again. So Mike, the Secretary of State will cancel your plate. She pulled me over, she said, your plate, your plate is canceled. And I'm like, I know. So she said, I'm not gonna tow your car, but I have to confiscate this plate off of your car. And I said, okay, I'm just gonna go to work. She said, you know you riding with no plate now, the next officer might not be so nice. And I'm like, well, I gotta take my chances, cause I have to go to work. So they took my, she took my plate, yeah, and other people don't know it. And they, um, it's like, um, a tactic that they use against our seniors, and it's so, I'd be so incensed because they have to go out the first of the month and, you know, do their little shopping, pay their bills or whatever. And they just take the plate, one, one gentleman had his grandkids, it was pouring down raining, and he had the tow truck come and take their car. He had those three little toddlers standing out in a thunderstorm on Seven Mile and Grasset as he took that gentleman's car. Which, again, he chose to do it. So what happens is, they take, you're just driving, you haven't done any, you're talking about people pulling you over.
Protective force, because they're, you know, everybody else has a militia, and we need our own protection for our neighborhoods, our children, and our families.
Uh, I believe that that also got to be, uh, with, hey, what's up? Uh, I believe that that has to also be, um, with us, you know, uh, with officials living in the, in the city. You know, they got to live in the city if they, policing the city, you know? Uh, so that those, those funds will remain in the city. Because if they're policing us and then living out in Jackson, all of our dollars are going out to Jackson. You know what I'm saying, on top of it? Yeah, but that's, 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 that's still as well as military and stuff like that. Cause you was talking about militias, right? Yeah.
I think that there should be, as when Coleman Young came in, you know, one of his major goals was one, to eliminate stress and to bring some equity within the fire and police department. That has never truly happened, and is, as a matter of fact, sliding backwards. I think that there should be, uh, absolute goal to ensure that the police and fire department, uh, look like the residents of the city. I think that there should be an absolute effort, a, a plan documented that, within a certain time period, no more than ten years, that the police department, as well as the fire department, will reach the same, um, um, ethnic composition in terms of African Americans as, uh, the city of Detroit.
I think she's coming back to get the mic.
Yeah, uh, as far as the, uh, funding for the policing and everything, this is why I'm saying that there needs to be a trust established so that the, our departments and things won't be, uh, parasitic in their operation amongst the citizen, to the citizens. You know what I'm saying? So, um, they, like she was saying, militias and everything can form and be a part of the neighborhood block clubs and stuff like that. And the, 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 the way that we, our police will functionally philosophically change because they have the economic means to do so and not need to issue tickets to have jobs secured.
I think that, you know, one of the, uh, issues that, that one of the migrates, the great migration from the south to the north was that we came to the north because we were looking for opportunities for jobs. The, the city of Detroit had numerous departments, and particularly the water department, that hired, and many families were, and families came out of poverty as a result of being able to work in these various departments. Almost all of these departments have been privatized. I think that these departments should be restored to the control of the city of Detroit. And therefore, under the city of Detroit, then you will have those opportunities for people then to apply for jobs. Right now, these jobs can go to anybody. No longer is the city of Detroit, it used to be number, when I'm a one or number two employer in the city of Detroit. It's not like that now. And if you look at who's working for the city, it's not us, okay?
Just want to let you know you had ten minutes remaining, so hopefully you're on number five or since. And you will have identified somebody that will come and make the report from your committee that you may wanna go over it at the end.
Who was black, who lived in an urban renewal area in Detroit that was displaced without receiving compensation. Not only should they get reparations, but they should get what the law said they would get. This area was governed by, uh, this whole, uh, city was governed by Public Act 344. And those people lost benefits, they lost jobs, they lost grants, and all the opportunities that were supposed to be, uh, there, available to them when their neighborhoods were taken. There were seventeen neighborhoods in Detroit, and most of them were prime land along the river downtown. And so many of those people were displaced, and their, uh, land was taken. And, and some of them were just thrown out, the ones in apartment buildings, and they should get, uh, compensation for that.
And then I got one more with the police thing. People who experience police brutality should be compensated. And people who, who, the police have beat them up, whatever, the, the police did to them and stole their freedom, whatever. Those people should be identified and given reparations for the abuse and harm that they faced.
For those that have been wrongly accused of crimes throughout the state of Michigan, I do reparations if they can prove that it's, it was racially motivated, they were racially profiled.
And, uh, all, uh, bad cops should definitely be removed. And by them having the funding, they would be able to do so, and, and replace them and get people trained.
Restore the African-centered education academies. And restore the, um, the, like, we had home economics, we had wood shop, metal shop. Restore those, those kind of programs for our children so that they, cause we, everybody ain't going to college. We need to restore the skills that were, uh, right in the Detroit public schools. I helped found the African-centered education, uh, throughout Detroit public schools, and I know what it took.
Uh, and they deputized felons in, uh, other states. So they deputize felons in other states to be police, you know what I'm saying? And eighteen-year-olds, yeah, they have, in, in like red states. So, so definitely we need to look at a serious militia and police force that she was talking about.
I, I'd like to see, um, a restoration of our neighborhoods. I think that we should have, uh, there should be a restoration of the neighborhoods and an honest effort to make sure that there's a public school consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about the money now, right? We, when we talking about his, when we talking about this, hold on, but li- listen, when we talking about this idea? It's cash, cash plus programs. But, so, so if we talking about this idea here, we gotta recognize for any cash, cash compensation program, we gonna need a pilot. And as soon as some Detroiters touch twenty-five thousand, that's gonna spark an interest. Now, the question is, how many people would the task force recommend for a pilot program where, let's say, a thousand Detroiters received a twenty-five thousand? Cause when we talk about Evanston, they the only city where eight, at least seventy people have gotten twenty-five thousand from that city. The only issue is that... Yeah, okay, up to a hundred thirty, twenty-five thousand, no other city has done that. But the reality is, but the reality is, in that city, it's only ten thousand black folks. They had a program where it's only six hundred people that's gonna get it. Yeah, but they, they are giving it. And so with Detroit, it may have to start off slow, but once people touch it, through marijuana taxes, uh, property taxes over a million dollars in the city of Evanston, and a few other programs, private donations, et cetera, but they took the steps to start paying those people. So I don't know, I hear it a lot, like people, I'm like you, I'm practical. Some people say three hundred thousand dollars for each Detroit. Being realistic, where did the money coming from? That's to your point, so I receive what you say.
If I could just push us along just a little bit, because we, we, we were on the cash payments, and there obviously other kinds of things, okay, in which we wanted to cover, uh, and we've almost kind of beat that one to the ground. It is reasonable for us to have different... It is reasonable for us to have different views. I mean, our community is not monolithic, you know? Uh, so there gonna be different views and people gonna come at it in different ways. So if we could go to, what, what, what's the next one that y'all want to take up? So that we can at least say that we, we covered more, well, you, you went up, you went to six, right?
Yeah, cause I, I think one through five is all compensation. You have five minutes to wrap up.
And four is for corrective social policies. It doesn't seem to do with money per se, you know, to individuals. And, and, and for me, for me, um, for me, the big, I would like to see more money come into Detroit for programs where there's, um, trade schools. I don't, you know, I, I know that, I, I personally watched when I was younger what was going on, you know, when my parents were trying to sell their house, we lived in Detroit, trying to sell their house to, to a black person and our neighbors working for it. It gotta be crazy types of, you know? Um, but, uh, so that's just a small.
They're, they're, they're going on their own issues, which I have constantly said, need to ask the people, what do they want? What are their eligibility requirements? We, we need to know what, and I think that, I'm not so sure that we're gonna finish this process in June. I'm not so sure. I think we need to have more of these and I don't even like this, this framework today, which I've said over and over, we need to have separate rooms so that we can hear each other. This has been very challenging. Uh, it needs to be longer than this, like sessions just on eligibility. Because, you know, if we have 50 people, we need to discuss that very clearly and I don't think these 20 minutes is enough.
It's so few of us that, that are participating and we, we are giving, uh, definitive, uh, uh, points that should be, should, should, should have been here months ago, you know what I'm saying? We, 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 we made sure we got rid of the African-Americans because it's letting other immigrants in. I mean, other races in. We made sure we got rid of, um, you know, we made a lineage base, so that goes back to the 1600s up until now, then the families that came to Michigan in the 1900s. So we did what we was supposed to do, I mean, we, we going in the circles saying the same thing over and over again.
Right, but, um, I have to say there are members of the task force who are not hearing you. So, um, so as long as I'm with that.
He was just to piggyback on what he was saying about participation. I'm out here in the city and I'm telling everybody, come, come to the reparations task force meetings, come on. And they're like, well, for what? I don't have nothing to say, but then when everything goes into place, they're gonna be the ones that say, who said that? I, I didn't agree to that, you know, and so I'm just gonna speak again. If you're not in these meetings, when everything goes down, just remember that you did not participate and it is what it is.
And, uh, just my last little word, I want to thank the task force for coming together and even, um, holding such a great debate on this issue in terms of restorative justice and seeing us as people and acknowledging the harm, the pain that continues and wanted to do that work. So I hope that we're able to get some restorative justice for our people that is long overdue and also include the people who were displaced as well by the 375, um, highway, expressway and Black Bottom and Paradise Valley as well. So I heard a lot about that, so thank you.
And, and I want to say, it's not just I-375, it's 375, 94, 96. There's this focus on 75, it's all of the freeways that were developed.
In, uh, Minneapolis, for Rondo, cause I, I lived in Minneapolis for like 15, 20 years, I don't know, I, my ex-wife, whatever. So, um, and I went on the bike trail for the, for the, uh, Rondo days. Kind of found out the same freeway that went through Detroit went through St. Paul, Minnesota. If, if you look at the freeway, it, it, it went, it went through every black dang on community, which is kind of crazy if you trace it, you know, but.
I wanted to add, as far as the boundary lines is concerned, are we including all of the black communities in the, in the area? Because even at the Black Bottom and Paradise Valley, I want reparations from Coamerica Park, consists on the Black Bottom. I want, uh, you know, I want the reparations from, uh, Fort Bill. You see, I want everything, if you want to go by the city, as, as far as the Black Bottom or Paradise Valley is concerned, besides for going up to Davison and in, uh,
Okay, the time is up, 40 minutes, I know it went by quick and I know that you're still talking as I'm talking, but, uh, we need to wrap it up because we have a couple other things we need to do and we want to get reports from each of your tables, so. All right, so do I have a volunteer that would come up first to get a report from their table? And if you could stop talking, I know that you still have other things you're discussing, but in order to keep the time and let's get out of here by four o'clock, we need to proceed. You're gonna do it? Okay, we got our first table, I appreciate if you could be quiet and let the individual get their report from their table. All right, I wish I had numbers on the table, I would call it out to tell you to be quiet. But let's give respect to the, all right, go on forward. Okay, here's the first report from the table, I hope everybody's listening. So if you have something that's the same, you may not have to do a long explanation of it. Here you go, and give your name and show what table you're at.
Good afternoon again, everyone, my name is Whitney Clark, I'm sitting back here at this table with these wonderful gentlemen and, uh, young lady. Um, so we discussed a number of great things. Uh, one of the things that we discussed more recently was, uh, just the importance of homeownership and the importance of getting people back on the pathway of homeownership. We also discussed, um, you know, revamping our schools and it sounded as though, uh, we were, we agreed in one way or the other about like a comprehensive education where people can get trades, where people can get financial literacy, where people can get just all the type of, uh, like skills that they need in the real society today to be able to work out of high school. And so that's what it sounds like we were talking about, uh, on the education front. Um, we also very briefly mentioned banks and the fact that, you know, traditional lending does not work for a lot of the homes here in the city. And so we talked about the fact that we do need to, uh, we do need to, uh, have our own, you know, financial institutions. One gentleman mentioned, uh, uh, group, group economics, excuse me. Everybody just pitching in periodically into a table. We, uh, lastly discussed, uh, deregulating. And again, just we need to talk about homeownership and how we can address education and things of that nature. Thank you very much.
Great, who be second?
My brother.
Yes, recognize it.
My brother here, he's, uh,
You ready to go? All right, here you go, and just give your name and the table you're at.
That one, just that one.
So, yeah, we sat at this table right here and, uh, we had some good discussions. Overall, we talked about, you know, who should get cash compensation? What should that priority be? And I think most of us at the table agreed that descendants of persons enslaved should have priority in this conversation. And when we drill down a bit further, we all agreed that elders should also be prioritized in any cash compensation program that comes up from Detroit, just because when we talk about time, everybody doesn't have additional years like some of us in this room. And then in addition to that, we also talked about investment in trade schools, investment in different apparatuses that go beyond cash because there was some thoughts about the practicality of where does all of this cash come from? How do we actually get that, uh, created without creating a burden for Detroit residents? And I think there was some interesting solutions brought up as far as recapturing funds, uh, that are currently within the city budget that are not being utilized the way that they should be, using those funds to fund these reparations initiatives. Um, on top of that, we kind of circled a little bit about the establishment of a freedman department. So when we talk about things like, how do we qualify, who's qualified? That genealogical conversation is something that keeps coming back to the table. And ultimately, we need a department or an agency that can track the status and work of the task force and at the same time, say that in five to 10 years, these things are working and thus reparations is being achieved in Detroit. And then I think beyond that, there were comments about group economics. Uh, Ms. Anita, she also mentioned that if we talking about eligibility, uh, kind of leveraging some of the concepts from the international model, which is nothing wrong with that. And then, uh, last but not least, there was comments and mentions about the harm to Detroit retirees who actually lost entire pensions. And in the context of this conversation, if we talking about generational wealth, people who were robbed of their retirement funds can't pass anything down. And so in the concept of cash compensation, there are things that need to be quantified and that was one that one of our group members brought up, so that's all we had.
Thank you, brother.
Great job, okay? And you need to know, all this is being recorded and we'll be able to document it for our task force when we meet next.
Hello, everyone, my name is Kimberly Canty, I sat at the table here. For number one, for the cash compensations, uh, we listed the illnesses for the areas like Delray who have been poisoned forever. Loss of bankruptcy rules for people's pensions, their jobs, their health insurance, the, the retirees lost, our police officers lost their health insurance, all of that should be cash compensated. Uh, the privatization of our jobs from public lighting, all of those gentlemen lost their jobs, uh, their health, their health insurance, their pensions when it was privatized out to DTE. Uh, loss of wages, the closing of our trades programs where our young people are now unable to become a tradesman and have a journeyman's license because now they have to pay $18,000 to take those classes, which were free through the city. Also, we paid them, they had insurance, they had, uh, benefits and could contribute to the pension. So we have the, um, other thing we need to be compensated for is the rainwater drainage fee. Um, I just watched them shut, uh, water down for the church on Mac and Connor. They shut their water off. Um, we have so many fees and things that we need to be, the redlining of our car insurance. I live on the border of Gross Point, if my house was two blocks over, it's a $400 a month difference in my car insurance. So we need to be compensated for the redlining of the mortgages, the insurance. And for number two, um, also the privatization of our, uh, clerical jobs out to a private company. So they're not making 12 or 13 dollars an hour, they're not making minimum wage, they have no insurance and they have no pension and no opportunity for advancement. So all of that needs to be, um, those people need to be compensated. For number two, our, uh, institutions, they need to return Bellisle, our water department, our recreation centers. Uh, Lipkey was given to, uh, Mitch Albom of the Detroit Free Press. And the first thing he did was close the pool. So the kids over in Seven Mile and Van Dyke area have lost the opportunity to learn how to swim for free through their recreation center. They're also giving out public land to Dan Gilbert and another gentleman, um, I can't think of his name, but all public land that has been given to private institutions and private citizens that especially are not Detroiters should be refunded and, and, um, given back to the city. The Land Bank is another institution that needs to go for the fraud that they have committed, taking the, yeah, the council never should have funded them again, so that needs to be closed and, and, uh, redone. It should go back to planning and development to the, uh, real estate department. Uh, the other thing for number three, for compensation through the waivers, we have the, the tow fee scam, where they're towing your car, the fake parking tickets they're giving you. Um, the drainage fee again from the water, the rainwater drainage fee, where only the citizens of Detroit are paying for people in Oakland County, which is one of the richest counties in America, why am I paying for them to flush their toilets? Same thing with McComb, McComb got a lawyer and sued, they don't pay the drainage fee either, they won. So I understand why we're the only one paying the drainage fee. For number four, um, our public transportation, um, that has to be redone. They don't have a, a public policy that fits our, uh, income guidelines for our buses. So that money that they're using could be used for our public transportation so our seniors can get out and go where they need to be. Also, we have the license plate scanner thing where only the Negroes in Detroit have their license plates scanned. So they tow your car again because you don't have it and it's also a crime, it's a misdemeanor. One of the Gross Point officers told me that, you can't switch the plates or none of that stuff. So now you're a criminal, cause you, cause you're poor and can't pay $600 a month car insurance. So then you go to try to go to grocery shop and they take your car. They also don't post on Woodward that if you park on that rail, that ticket is $450. There are no signs posted anywhere, like they posted on the handicap, this is a $150 fine. It's posted on the sign so you know. So everything now is, is a scam for Detroiters. And for number five, we want to have our home repair grants restored. That was a program designed from Mary Ann Mahaffey. The senior home repair program was funded every year. So you to get a porch, a roof or whatever for our senior home repair program. That has been taken away. And for number six, for the freedman department, we need to have a competency test for whoever's gonna be in that department. They need to have a background, expertise in whatever the, the issue is that they're monitoring. And also they need to meet metrics. We need to have you show some advancement and that you need to actually do something for that position. There have to be some system where you're not sitting there three years, we're paying you twiddle your thumbs. So that was our, um,
I love the way you went down one through six. Next table? No, I don't know which one's last, one, did you all go?
Thank you, um, as you can see, we were very busy over there. Everything that was already stated was exactly what we talked about, but let's go a little bit further. So when, um, talking about specific harms and repairs, other than just cash payments, um, the idea of repairing all of the harms that occurred in the black community. Um, harm of taking our land, our home, um, free education, since that was something that was denied of us. Um, restoration of community services, being tax-free because we were overtaxed, free healthcare because we are abused within the healthcare system and experimented on. Police reform, um, mental health reform, um, the establishment of black hospitals with doctors who care about the people within that community because they are also black, instead of being, again, experimented on. Other things that we talked about is reparations, the reparations department and what, uh, it could do, right? We talked about the citizens that are working within the city departments, fire, police, or with the city regardless, should live within the city borders. Because if you are a citizen of the city, then you will care about the city instead of taking your money from your job to a suburban area and not caring about the citizens here. It'll make you pay attention to your job. Uh, we also talked about the drainage free fee within the city and how we're paying it in other suburbs. We're talking about, um, the tax exemption, we talked about the pipe repair fees and that program that they have now and how hard it is to be a part of that program, we should get that for free. That should be a free, uh, service because of all of the harm that was done within the water department itself and those systems being old and beyond disrepair. How many people lost their homes just because of a water bill? Uh, we talked about grants, um, we talked about the establishing, the establishment of a African town or what we like to call the Black Business District. They would prefer that this be in areas that was taken from us like Paradise Valley or Black Bottom um, to get rid of bad cops who are taking money from the city because of lawsuits. Um, the idea that we do not accept cops who are already known to have bad behavior and who are felons, because that is a problem as well, um, being a felon in one area and then going to another state and also being able to become a police officer. We already talked about, We already talked about, that's, that's the city position, but we really talked about them being, living here, having the benefit of police officers knowing their neighbors and knowing the children within their community and establishing community because of that. We talked about the restoration of recreational services, as this young lady also talked about. We talked about dismantling all forms of the police force within our schools who are harming our children. We talked about the food deserts and restoring nutritious food within our communities. We talked about restoring Black Bottom and Paradise Valley. If it's not going to be a business district, to be housing and land that we would have priority in owning because that land was taken from us. We talked about first choice reparations going to people within the Black community. You have to be an African American of chattel slavery. We talked about offering trades within the educational system or apprentice programs, like there used to be economic programs and apprentice programs to help the children acclimate after graduation and to do it young. We talked about the educational system and how it is inferior to our counterparts out in the suburbs. For instance, what's the name of that school again, ma'am? Cranbrook, which I agree. We talked about funding trusts for not only just businesses, but also for communities and Black club grants. We talked about bringing back equity and DEI within the city departments as well as in the trades and the unions. We talked about deprior, deprioritizing our jobs, just like you did earlier as well. We talked about giving people who had experienced police brutality, compensation. We also talked about freeing our political prisoners and people who had been put into institutions because of cannabis or crack. Because now, they're saying that they want to help these people and there are nonviolent crimes. And now you can receive help for things like that if it's an opioid. But our people are still in jail from the eighties, okay? We also talked about a restoration of all programs that were taken, like for instance, our, what was the department, ma'am? I don't remember. I know it was the Health Department and there was another one that you were speaking about. Do you remember? Oh, yeah. All right, DHS, the Health Department, all the, all of the departments. We also, lastly, talked about, uh, police officers getting additional training because they cannot take or handle people with mental health disorders. And restoring African-centered edu, listen, we was writing it down, okay? Thank you, y'all did a wonderful job. Thank you so much. Oh, I thought I did, I said that, okay. Tier level harms, the idea that some people have priority. For instance, people who had experienced harms from Black Bottom and Paradise Valley or our, our seniors or people who had lost their homes, they would get priority over others. But thank you.
Thank you very much, all right. I think the one last table? Now, the next table back, did you do that? Oh, Hazel was doing it, okay. Do you have a mic? Here, here's a mic.
That was connected, too.
All right, thank you. So, I'm Janice Hazel. A member of the reparations task force. I want to thank the seven people who are sitting at my table for being open and honest in their recommendations. So, we went down and focused quite a bit on the survey that I hope everyone will take. So, number one, to receive compensation through Detroit reparations programs, a person must be, number one, the question, a descendant of an African enslaved in the United States. And there was very, very strongly agreed that that is an eligibility requirement, excuse me, that we need to have as an eligibility requirement. Number two, the age of an individual to be able to receive reparations, at least twenty-one years of age. That was totally voted down, that a person should be whatever age they are, whenever, if this program were to come into fruition. So, no age limitations. Number three, a resident of Detroit for at least twenty years, no. The people at my table would like to see it to be lineage-based and you must have had lineage in the city of Detroit at least fifty years. So, that is at least fifty years whenever this program might come into fruition. And those people who may have been here, which would have been our elders, our parents, our grandparents, possibly grandparents, great-grandparents may no longer be living, but that's where the lineage line goes down. So, at least fifty years and not twenty years that was in the survey. And then, number four, residency status, a current resident of Detroit. And our table members said no because people have had to move out of the city of Detroit for a variety of reasons. There are people who are our elders who spent sixty years here but now are living with another relative in another city in and around Metro Detroit or possibly outside the, the state of Michigan because they need to be cared for or they're living in a respite or a senior facility. Detroit does not have many of those. They are in our surrounding suburbs. So, it was stated that the individual's eligibility, they do not need to be a current resident of Detroit but must meet the other eligibility requirements of having lived in Detroit or have lineage in Detroit for at least fifty years. And then, a big issue that was discussed is how do we, what do we call ourselves? And we were supposed to have, last year, during some of our sessions, the African American, even though that's in the ballot language, is something that the people at my table don't want. They don't consider themselves African Americans because that opens the door for a lot of other things. Some of the other naming, naming frameworks would be ADOS, which is African descendants of slaves or American descendants of slaves, Freedmen of Detroit, American Negroes, or Black. But African American is definitely something that the people at my table no longer want to have in the framework. Remove that, that terminology. And absolutely, within the program, whatever it turns out to be, the individuals at my table want cash reparations to be a component, not just programs. But cash must be a part of the equation. And the other thing that we did have a bit of a discussion on is clarification of the reparations framework, restorative justice and reparative justice. So, much of what's been said here is about the national framework for reparations. It's not city of Detroit. What did the city of Detroit do? How did it harm its residents? So, that's something that we have to always remember. We're talking about the city of Detroit and its institutions, its, its government. And so, a lot of this other dialogue is about national reparations, federal reparations, national or federal harms. So, we have to be very clear about that. And I believe I hit all of them. We have an incredibly knowledgeable person at our table, Ms. Mayberry, who spoke to us a few months ago, I think sometime last year, about a lawsuit, about that, it was, what was the, the award? It was a million dollars? One point three million dollars because the plaintiff was charging against it. I'm, I'm sorry, you don't have the microphone. But the naming, they did not want to be called...
I went before the state of Michigan on a lawsuit stating that he didn't want to be called an African American. And he won the lawsuit because on his birth certificate, he was a Negro. At this particular time, like I, I was stating, that we don't, I do not have a race on my birth certificate. It was taken off at this time. My children, my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren, because I found my lineage from eighteen thirty-five. It makes me a prisoner of war during the Trail of Tears because my people were, you know, were a prisoner of war that we as Black people in America, or you want to say Black. I, I got another story with that one. But the thing is, because we fought a hundred-year war to save our states because we owned Florida, we owned Georgia, we owned Alabama, and we had to move out of there because of going through the Trail of Tears also. So...
If, if you could wrap it up and you can make public comments...
What year was that, please? What year?
What year?
Oh, the year that I...
The lawsuit?
For the city of Detroit was, I mean, for state of Michigan, is in, uh, in nineteen ninety-eight or nine.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that, that table. We have people there on Zoom. We want, we put the categories, the SIS categories online for them to see. If there's anyone that wants to make a comment on these SIS areas or what they think should be something that we recommend that was not mentioned already, then you can raise your hand to be recognized. Okay, go on.
There were seventeen urban renewal areas in the city of Detroit. And those areas were in what we see as prime land now. Mostly, you see downtown, you see along the river, all the development and everything. Those were urban renewal areas. In an urban renewal area, the city must give the people their money that they get from the government to fix their homes up. They have to be eligible, put in a situation where they are eligible for grants and all kind of benefits. These people didn't get those. In addition to that, and I am a person that really suffered through this more than anybody I know, and I was an elected official. These people lost their property. They were thrown on the streets, some of them. They, um, they didn't get to benefit from any of the development that occurred in their neighborhoods. And the city was saying, yes, they could come back when they fix it up. But now they have condos and homes there that they can't afford to live in. Those people should be compensated.
Okay, so you want compensation for those...
Yes.
Very, thank you very much. Anybody on Zoom that wants to speak to the SIS areas? That's something that had not been mentioned already that you'll highlight? Just remember, we will have public comment at the end for any other comments you may have. Is there anyone that has raised their hand?
Yes, there are five hands raised. First is Narelle Hempel.
Had to leave it for two minutes.
Thank you so much. May I be heard?
We hear you.
Oh, okay. My name is Narelle Hempel. And I just had a quick comment about those six areas and maybe suggestion for how we could implement them. From my participation in the Detroit Reparations Task Force, it seems like this, there's some more time needed. It may be even beyond the January deadline, excuse me, June deadline. And maybe, um, we need something that's going to be permanently established to continue to build this out. So, my recommendation is to think of systems that would actually help us to decide those things and in a couple different ways. It sounds like we need to protect our rights. Hearing the statement that, um, the, the young woman said about the license plate is really disturbing because that's a receding of our rights in real time right now. So, if there's a way that we can protect the rights that we have and then also kind of look at the rights that we've lost over the years and work backwards. For example, if we were to get an equitable lease agreement payment with Leewa for the Detroit Water and Sewer Department, we know that that would be two hundred fifteen million dollars per year. Right now, we're getting a deficit of somewhere around a hundred seventy or so million dollars a year. So, that would be significant when we talk about jobs and opportunities and even cash payments to Detroiters. And I'll stop there, thank you.
Adelia Israel?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Do the chair, we can hear you.
We can hear you, go on.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. This is, um, Adelia from Detroit. And I just have two pretty specific questions about the financing of this future reparations division for the city of Detroit or Freedmen's or whatever they want to call it. I'm going towards where is the funding coming from? I heard Anita mention something about bonds. That's a little sophisticated. We're probably going to have to have a whole session discussing that and how that really works. But we are in a process now of trying to figure out how we're going to take the funding and even the rest that we have, the two hundred and three thousand dollars. What are we going to do with that in the next two months? I agree with Janice. We need to extend this beyond just a rush. I feel like we're rushing through a lifelong matter of concern for harms of Black people in Detroit, which is what we always end up being put in, some kind of hurry-up thing for something that's happened to us for decades, centuries. I say we stop the rush thing, period. And I don't know how we're going to do it, but it needs to get done immediately. Stop rushing us through trying to heal ourselves, period. That's one part. The other part is, um, I agree with Gwen Mingo. And I'm going to be honest, she went through heck in Brush Park, which is where a lot of white people want to be. They're gentrified. Most of that area's got high-end condos up and down the road. And they put her out of her. She had a really nice-sized historic property. And those white guys came and took it.
Next, we have Jerry, guess, I'm sorry. Would you like to proceed or do the two seconds?
That, that's it, go on.
I mean, two minutes.
Next person.
Okay. Next is Jerry Goldberg.
Jerry Goldberg?
Yes, here I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Listening to, I think people have come up with tremendous suggestions of how reparations can be used to deal with the many crises we have in Detroit. But the question, of course, is where the funds are going to come from. And I submit that the deep pocket that needs to be gone after are the banks. It's the banks. Sixty-five thousand Detroiters lost their homes to foreclosures just from two thousand five to two thousand fifteen as a result of criminal predatory loans by every major bank. As a result, our population was reduced from one six, from one million to six hundred fifty thousand. And we went from the high, the city with the highest home, Black homeownership to a city with thirty-five thousand rental evictions every year. These same banks could then put the city into bankruptcy through criminal loans called interest rate swaps that produced the bankruptcy. And, and of course, that bankruptcy was staged to pay off the banks at the expense of the retirees. Seventy-eight percent of the cost of the bankruptcy went on our retirees. And these same banks are responsible for the mass water shut-off that occurred in the city where the, the bonds are issued allegedly for, uh, infrastructure, went again to pay off criminal, criminal rate, criminal rate, interest rate swaps to the banks. The banks are the target. They are the deep pocket that can pay for what's needed to repay the people that have been, our city that's been destroyed by their practices. And of course, these same banks, where every one of them was involved in the slave trade. And if you look at the encobritz lawsuits, they target the banks. So, it goes way back. So, I would just want to say, I'd be glad to work with the guy. I've spoken to the commission on this. I would be glad to write up a report on the banks. But I think, of course, people say, how are we going to get to the banks? We'll get to the banks, as one of the women said. I believe Edith Ford, the same way the reparations will be won, through struggle. The banks are vulnerable. Let's go after them. Let's set an example in Detroit that we're going to go after the deep pockets that have robbed the African-American community and all oppressed communities.
Thank you. Someone else?
Next, we have, uh, Vanita. Vanita's iPhone?
Vanita?
Vanita's iPhone?
Yes, we can hear you, go on.
I've enjoyed the conversation. And my, my support is for Mr. Goldberg and Ms. Israel, who just spoke, as well as others. We should stop rushing something and make sure we cover all the bases We should stop rushing something and make sure we cover all the bases because we've been neglected for so long, and the current administration has showed who it is and what it wants to do. But we will not go away. We will not go back. We're going to move forward with this task force in a unified manner that will address generations that will come after us because we have been abused, but we haven't given up. So I commend you to keep fighting a good fight, but regret. If we regret that we didn't take the time to do it all, we don't have to do that now. Let's stick together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, we have Net Guest, N-E-T-T-E.
Net, can you hear us?
Yes, good afternoon. Can I be heard?
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak, and I would like to commend everyone for taking the time to view through each of these points, discuss them in detail, and present a very, very good finding. I would actually recommend, I appreciate all of the six points, but I would probably recommend that Veer, that none of them are either or, all of them come to fruition. However, if the vehicle can be point number six, the Freeman Department or Freeman Bureau to help facilitate this, that would be ideal. My only concern is, I wonder if some of these that can be addressed, not through reparations, but the obligation of the city or state to pick up some of these, to pick up some of the costs and some of the administrative courses as well, to be responsible facilitating some of these harms being addressed. I think some of this is actually at the state level, not the, and I think if funds are appropriated from the state, that you can couple those funders in addition to the funding that comes through for reparations to get some of these things done. I do not feel that a reparations budget should cover some of this. Again, it should be the financial responsibility of the state of Michigan, and I guess, you know, with you all, in order to facilitate and get these done. So all six come to fruition, all six are addressed and done, but not from a reparations budget. Get some of the appropriated funds from the state in addition to what you need to push for reparations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Okay, that concludes the ones on Zoom. The next item is public comments. So if anybody wants to make public comment, I would only ask that try not to repeat what you did at the table, trying to expand on it. We will, you know, maybe ask people to expand on it as we go back in our committee, but if you have another area you want to make public comment on, now's the time to do that.
Member Parker.
Evan's going to walk around with the mic, so.
Member Parker?
Yes.
If I might be heard. Mr. Singleton has just come back into the room. He was in a National Black Panthers meeting, and so could he have three minutes before we do public comment because we're going to end and?
Yes, I think that we would love to hear from him.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to introduce, excuse me, I'd like to introduce Rashad Singleton, who is here from Florida, just flew in this morning. He is the president of the National Reparations League. You will hear about a lot of different national reparations organizations. As you can see, Mr. Singleton, some of you might know him from his hardwood days, his former NBA player, and I'm so very happy that he and other young men like himself are taking the time to use their platform, which, you know, if you've been in the NBA, you have a large platform and a large voice. And so he's here today to give us just a little information on reparations on the national level, which we do have a legislation, H.R. forty, but other actions such as the National Reparations League Report Card and School that I hope that you will take time to visit their website. Thank you.
I see one is just tall enough to get you under it. Please proceed on. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you, Sister Janice, for inviting me. Shalom and all praise to the Most Highs. A blessing to be here with you today. I bring your greetings from Florida, and I just want to let you know, first of all, I know this isn't an easy process, but I want you to think about where you at and where Alabama is. Think about where y'all at, where Florida is. Y'all are leading the way. Y'all are inspiring the whole nation. So keep on going on. Each and every one of you, I thank you for your time. You could be sports, doing this and another, but you choose to fight this liberation. As Sister Janice said, I am the president of the National Reparation League, where we have chapters around the nation advocating and fighting for reparations. We've developed something called the Reparations Report Card, where we want to hold politicians accountable. Room, I ask you, should a politician get your vote if they're not for reparations?
No.
Should a business get your money if they're not for reparations?
No.
We've developed something called the Reparations Report Card. If you are not for our reparations, you will not get our support. It's too many, too many politicians out here coming to church right before the election just to get your vote. Too many politicians out here kissing black babies just to get your vote. We don't give a damn about you playing the saxophone no more. We don't give a damn about you appeasing us and trying to be cool with us. Our people, as you can see, want one thing, and that's reparations, reparations, reparations. It is time for the youth to unite with the elders. The youth has the energy, the elders have the answers. It's time we unite across the board, and something that I've learned, that there is some white people for reparations. I thank you for being here. We have to understand that people that are for our reparations are our friends, and I don't care what they look like. If they're not for your reparations, they ain't your friend. So I say black power to you. Keep on fighting. We love you from Florida. We love you from the South. Rashad Singleton, Black Power family, Black Power.
Thank you so much, and keep up the great work that you're doing. Okay, public comments. I saw a couple of hands back there. If you can get the mic back there, and again, it's two minutes.
Yes, my name is Victor Gifton, for those who are online.
Ow! See? That was, that was ablest of us, wasn't it? Talking about stand up.
Yes, I mean, after, after listening to everybody who presented, something struck me as not being said. What about the reparations for those who are incarcerated?
Or worse.
Okay? We, we, we look at, I mean, this whole reparation thing has been, as Sri MacIntyre said back in her book, the criminalization of a race. So we have a lot of people who in lockdown, will they be have, will they have access to the reparations? We know we have political prisoners. Will they have access to, if nothing else, will their sentence be commuted? We need to make sure that all those who are outside, as well as those who are inside, also benefit from this reparation movement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Baba.
Okay, briefly.
I wanted to, I wanted to say, I did mention that when we were over at Burt's Place about the Duggan eliminating a Recorder's Court. That was the worst thing to happen to us as far as criminalization of the black man in Detroit. Once that we voted in a, in, for the Nevers and Bustle to go to prison, once that happened, they took away the rights of over a million people to be a jury of their peers. They shut down Recorder's Court, and that was like one of the worst things to happen to us. Still, to this day, we do not have our own court. Gross Point has their court. East Point has a court. Roseville has a court, but it's almost a million citizens here. There's only 30,000 people that live in East Point. So how do they have their own court, and we don't have our own court? Then the state, who is our nemesis, the state of Michigan is your enemy. They took, they lifted the residency requirement. They allowed Duggan to steal their Milich money from the public schools and our libraries. They're only doing it here in Detroit, where the Negroes live. Those state laws, so that's why Duggan wants to become your governor, so he can make state laws, public acts, that will kill you off.
Ten seconds.
So the other, that's one thing that we need to have reversed because you don't have a jury of your peers. You have a jury of Wayne County, and most of them are from Livonia, and everybody, almost every citizen of Livonia is of German descent. My friend had to go to court. They gave him his list. I said, oh, you better go with the judge because everybody that's going to be on your jury is a Nazi. So people don't understand how the court works and, and the prison system and judges. That's the thing that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is killing us off for.
All right, I see more hands going up, so we need, really limited. I hate to make it one minute, but go on and try to do it quickly.
Hello, everyone. William Davis. I think a greater effort need to be made, not only to help the city of Detroit retire, which I am one, a greater effort needs to be made to reclaim our assets that were stolen by the state in a corrupt governmental action, because we really was not bankrupt, but we are still continuing to hurt. If we was able to retrieve our water department or get a fair lease, if we was able to retrieve our DIA or get a fair amount of money for it, you know, we could, we have assets that were stolen by the state of Michigan. So we need to be aggressively pursuing actions to get our assets returned. You know, we do not need a whole bunch of white people come and tell us anything. We need to start spending our money in our community, and if our money turned over in our community, we would be able to do a whole lot better economically. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Someone else? Go on.
Very quickly, Whitney Clark again. I just wanted to say that we are, I, I want to just kind of express the urgency of the moment as well, and I know that we don't want to rush and miss something, but I do also want to, like, call to everyone's attention that we are like one part of a mass movement that's going on, and we have to come together in this moment with the retirees, with those who have just been living here for decades, with those who've been overtaxed, with those who want better schools. There, there are a number of different movements, and so I believe that the power is in collaboration. And so we do need to also, like, be mindful, but also let's narrow this down as quickly and, and efficiently as possible so that we can come together while people are trying to become governor, while people are trying to become mayor, because people are asking for our vote right now. Let's have a list, and let's make sure that we're holding them accountable.
Okay, Evan, if you could come toward the front somewhat, most of them from the back, raise your hand if you want to make a comment, and hopefully you could limit it down as shortly as possible.
Yep, yep, I got you. So my name's Ernest Russell, and I'm with the Freeman Agenda League of Michigan. Before I leave out of here, I hope everyone gets one of these postcards, and on it is a QR code to message the state, because as our sister pointed out, the state of Michigan has played a role in the destruction of black Detroit, Detroit families. In addition to that, not only just Detroit, there's Ben Harvard, there's Saginaw, there's Flint, there's a lot of other cities, and just like in Detroit, those people are going through the same harms. And so I asked that everyone scan that QR code and send it out to the legislators to say that you support a state study. And as Brother Rashad pointed out, they're going to be coming back to these churches, they're going to be coming back to these events and kissing your babies, yet afraid to talk about, afraid to talk about the one thing that really matters, and that's reparations. And so, you know, a lot of people give Big Gretsch a lot of clout, and even Lieutenant Governor Garland, they give him clout. But where are these people when it comes to these topics and these issues, and where have they even spoken on Detroit reparations when we talking about these last two years? And I think it's time to hold those people accountable. So we urge your support, and I definitely want to just second the thoughts about not rushing our repair and supporting the establishment of a department that allows us to track if Detroit is actually doing this thing the right way. And with that, I conclude.
Thank you. Someone else? Evan?
Hi, Anita Bell, in Cobra, Detroit, and we have a meeting tomorrow. If you need the Zoom link, let me know. And quickly, Ruby means reparations and universal basic income, and I'm not the one that's, that made it up, but I'm one of the ones that promotes it. What we're going into, why we can't wait, why we have to rush, is we're going into a recession, and you don't believe it? Two-thousand-point drop in the stock market? Maybe you don't have any stock, but if you're talking about retirement, that's hurting some people right there, okay? So we have to look at, a lot of people may get laid off because of robotics and AI and all of that that's coming, that's coming. So we have to start thinking not just about the past, but how we can implement this into the future that we know is coming. And we do have that sense of urgency that you mentioned, because do you think we have two more years to work on this? If you do, I pity you.
We have two online.
Last one.
Y'all know I ain't got nothing good to say.
We have two online.
Y'all ready?
Um. Go on, real quick. And why is he getting that together? I apologize, but we, we do have a time that we have to get.
Here I go, here I go. It's, it's real quick, though, you know, as an offense to reparations of them not giving us reparations, this might hurt a lot of y'all, but we gonna have to pull a, push a non, a boycott on all non-black businesses in our black communities, like, like he just said. Arabs in Detroit during the pandemic made eight billion dollars off black dollars. You know, dog, I'm pretty sure nobody in here got at least $500,000 in their pockets. But them, them Arabs made eight billion dollars in Detroit during the pandemic. So as an offense to the reparations, we're gonna have to push a non, a boycott on all non-black businesses, as well as not giving any politician that doesn't support reparations our vote. That's simple, that's simple, that's simple. If they don't like it, oh, well. Because, and I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna say this, the difference is between 125 years ago, Tulsa, Oklahoma, and now, we gonna shoot back.
Silence.
Okay, you know, if you have some other comments, we're all here, we'll be here after the meeting. Please just come to us and share it with us, and we'll make sure we record it so we'll have it for our meeting. Okay, go on. Just letting you know, everybody, the reason why we'd be late is because he wants to make his comment.
That's all right.
No pressure on him.
That's all right.
Okay, and I accept that.
My name is Jerry Flynn Dale, and one thing that I didn't hear from anyone here is, there's a law, eighteen USC two forty-one and two forty-two, which is deprivation of rights. It has no time limit on this. It can be from 100 years ago, and it can be from right now. And everything everybody explained was a deprivation of civil rights. And if y'all can look this up, write this down, look this up, because if you don't go in that direction, there will be no reparations. That's federal law.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being brief. Next item is the Treasurers Report.
Okay.
Janet Hazel?
Thank you. Because we are at time, I want to respect your time, I'm going to defer, quiet, please. I'm going to defer the, the Treasurers Report. There was a brief synopsis by our, our project manager earlier in the day. What I'd like to do under the Treasurers Report, we are solvent, and I'd like to have a very quick yay or nay from those who are in the room. We've talked about a reparations report card that's national, but we will also be grading individuals who are running. Right now, you have a governor's race, and there were individuals in the room that said this is a statewide issue. Never forget Orsel and Minnie McGee on Seabalk, who had to go all the way to the State Supreme Court, which decided they could not live in a house. Black people who could not live in a house back in 1942 that they bought, there is a historic marker there. Go drive by it, right off between Tyreman and Beechwood on Seabalk. This is a state issue that we should be dealing with, and for those who will not be kissing Brother Baba Victor's babies, they will be out. That's Mayor Duggan, that's the Secretary of State, that's Garland Gilchrist, that's a whole lot of people who are running for governor. I'd like a show of hands or just say yay or nay. Do you want your tax dollars that were appropriated for this reparations task force to send a delegation, I don't know how many that will be, but to the Mackinac Policy Conference, which is hosted by the Detroit Regional Chamber, so that we can participate and ask those people who are going to be asking for our votes? Detroit's got the largest scale of votes. Do you want to be represented at that policy conference in, in May?
Okay, very helpful, and we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
We really want to thank you for all your participation. It really was good. I apologize for the time limit that we have, but we do try to get out of here by two o'clock. But, four o'clock, excuse me. But please, use our email, use our website, communicate directly to the office. Any concerns that come up anytime in the future, we want that type of input. Next item is adjournment. Property moved and supported. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much again for coming out.